Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the July 11th meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing matters of personnel and litigation. And at this time, I'd like to ask for motion to reopen the public session.
I move.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
So, welcome everyone to the first meeting of our new fiscal year. Without further ado, I will hand it over to Lisa to administer some oaths of office.
Okay, so Holly McCall. Christine Ackerman.
(inaudible).
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of... That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of... Superintendent.
...of the Chappaqua Central School District. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome officially. Okay.
Just sign.
Okay, signed the oath. Are we ready to continue? Lisa, you have everything you need?
Yes.
Okay, now we will move to the election of the board president for 2018-19. I move that Warren Mezner be elected President of the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second that motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Warren.
Thank you. I move that Jane Shepherdson be appointed to serve as Vice President of the Board of Education of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019. She shall have the power to exercise the duties of the President in case of absence or disability of the President. In the absence of both the President and the Vice President, Victoria Tipp is authorized to act in the capacity of the President.
I second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Carries. Congratulations. Now we will move around.
Do we do our oath?
We'll move and then we can do the oath. Yes, thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you so much.
For the next...
Thanks, we're so excited. We'll never see her again.
Get a hug.
Jessica, you're the only one other than me.
No, we're going to put Holly here. Holly goes in the middle.
Holly is here.
Holly's going to go here, Jeffrey's going to go there.
Okay, so I'm going here?
You're going here.
Okay. This is whose script? I know, I'm not sure whose script this is. Is this you now?
Your hand.
This might be Jeff's papers. Who's Coke? Who's soda?
Holly's there, okay.
It's Jeffrey.
And who's here? Jeffrey. Okay, so we don't know if he's coming back. Jeff's here. Jeff just came.
He's here?
Yep, he just walked in.
Indeed, that's impressive. Yeah. She's very...
Script. You know, you know.
What's that? I think we all have heard of it.
Yeah, the meeting has started.
Jane Kemble. Aye. Jane Kemble Shepherdson. (inaudible).
(inaudible).
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of... That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of... The Vice President of the Board of Education. Of the Chappaqua Central School District. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you. May I have a motion for School District Clerk?
I move Lisa Elsner be appointed School District Clerk of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
Oops, sorry, I don't have my script open. I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Tell Lisa.
Lisa, please stand. Put your hand up, thank you. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Lisa Elsner.
(inaudible) swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
(inaudible).
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of... Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the Chappaqua Central School District.
Of the Chappaqua Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion for School District Clerk?
I move Lisa Elsner be appointed School District Clerk of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
Oops, sorry, I don't have my script open. I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Tell Lisa.
Lisa. May I have a motion for School District Treasurer?
That's wrong.
Yeah. Should I go? Yes. I move that Blair Blanch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that John Chow be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that Blair Blanch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
Oops, sorry, I don't have my script open. I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Tell Lisa.
Lisa, please stand. Put your hand up, thank you. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Lisa Elsner.
(inaudible) swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
(inaudible).
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of...
Of the Chappaqua Central School District.
Of the Chappaqua Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Lisa.
May I have a motion for School District Treasurer?
That's wrong.
Yeah. I know. Should I go? Yes. I move that Blair Blanch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that John Chow be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that Blair Blanch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Treasurer?
That's wrong.
Yeah. Should I go? Yes. I move that Blair Blanch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that John Chow be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that John Chow be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that John Chow be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of the Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund?
I move that Blanch Blair be appointed Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second that motion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund?
I move that Blanch Blair be appointed Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that Blanch Blair be appointed School District Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Attendants Officers? I move that Building Administrators or Designees shall be appointed Attendants Officers for the 2018-19 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint the community members to the Audit Committee?
I move that Michael Greenstein, Dean Rock, and Alan Rosen be appointed to serve on the Audit Committee for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Claims Auditor?
I move that Christopher H. Wheeler shall be appointed Claims Auditor for the 2018-19 school year.
I second.
Opposed? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint members of the committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education? I move that individuals listed in attached memo from Heidi McCarthy be appointed to the committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education.
I second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education? I move that the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education be appointed for the 2018-2019 school year. The list shall also include the names of other certified impartial hearing officers requesting to serve in the district. Impartial hearing officers shall be selected, appointed, and compensated in accordance with Policy 3030.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Medicaid Compliance Officer, may I have a motion for Medicaid Compliance Officer?
I move that Tony Sinanis be appointed Medicaid Compliance Officer for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second.
I have a question. Is that possible? He's not here yet?
Yeah, well, he's been appointed to serve and he starts on Monday, so it'll be okay to appoint him tonight.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Internal Auditor?
I move that Tobin and Company be appointed Internal Auditor for the school year 2018-2019.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion for Payroll Certification Officers? Yes, I move that John Chow and Tony Sinanis be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Property Control Manager?
Aye, yep. I move that Michael Trinick be appointed Property Control Manager of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for Payroll Certification Officers?
Yes, I move that John Chow and Tony Sinanis be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Independent Auditor?
I move that the firm of O'Connor Davies Monzen Dovens LLP be appointed a School District Independent Auditors of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Independent Auditor?
I move that the firm of O'Connor Davies Monzen Dovens LLP be appointed a School District Independent Auditors of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint Homeless Liaisons?
I move that Lisa Biseglia and Heidi McCarthy be appointed Homeless Liaisons for the Chappaqua Central School District.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to appoint the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education?
I move that the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by the New York State Department of Education be appointed for the 2018-2019 school year. The list shall also include the names of other certified impartial hearing officers requesting to serve in the district. Impartial hearing officers shall be selected, appointed, and compensated in accordance with Policy 3030.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Medicaid Compliance Officer, may I have a motion for Medicaid Compliance Officer?
I move that Tony Sinanis be appointed Medicaid Compliance Officer for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second.
I have a question. Is that possible? He's not here yet?
Yeah, well, he's been appointed to serve and he starts on Monday, so it'll be okay to appoint him tonight.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Internal Auditor?
Yes, I move that John Chow and Tony Sinanis be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for Purchasing Agent and Alternate Purchasing Agent?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed Purchasing Agent and John Chow be appointed Alternate Purchasing Agent for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Records Management and Access Officer, may I have a motion for Records Management and Access Officer?
I move that John Chow be appointed Records Management and Access Officer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the firm of Shaw, Carlson, May, and Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the firm of O'Connor Davies Monzen Dovens LLP be appointed a School District Independent Auditors of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Attorney?
Yes, I move that the firm of Shaw, Carlson, May, and Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Independent Auditor?
Yes, I move that John Chow and Tony Sinanis be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for Payroll Certification Officers?
Yes, I move that John Chow and Tony Sinanis be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the property control manager?
Aye, yep. I move that Michael Trinick be appointed Property Control Manager of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the purchasing agent and alternate purchasing agent?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed purchasing agent and John Chow be appointed alternate purchasing agent for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Records Management and Access Officer, may I have a motion for Records Management and Access Officer?
I move that John Chow be appointed Records Management and Access Officer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for Purchasing Agent and Alternate Purchasing Agent?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed purchasing agent and John Chow be appointed alternate purchasing agent for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for Purchasing Agent and Alternate Purchasing Agent?
I move that Michael Trinick be appointed purchasing agent and John Chow be appointed alternate purchasing agent for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Records Management and Access Officer, may I have a motion for Records Management and Access Officer?
I move that John Chow be appointed Records Management and Access Officer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Records Management and Access Officer, may I have a motion for Records Management and Access Officer?
I move that John Chow be appointed Records Management and Access Officer of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-19.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Attorney?
Yes, I move that the firm of Shaw, Carlson, May, and Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Attorney?
Yes, I move that the firm of Shaw, Carlson, May, and Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Attorney?
Yes, I move that the firm of Shaw, Carlson, May, and Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion for the appointment of School District Independent Auditor?
I move that the firm of O'Connor Davies Monzen Dovens LLP be appointed a School District Independent Auditors of Chappaqua Central School District for the school year 2018-2019.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
He's our senior member and ranking member of the Facilities Committee and the Green Committee. And Holly is going to be on the Order Committee, the Facilities Committee, the Wellness Committee, and the liaison of the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so we have a few things before, hopefully Jonathan Costa will be here shortly. And if he doesn't arrive, maybe we can move him at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
If he doesn't get here on time, I know he had shared with me, he may be a little delayed getting here this evening. So I just wanted to update the community on a few different pieces of information I think are important as we move into the summer months. But before I do that, I do want to extend my welcome to Adam. I'm glad that he's here and he's going to be sharing with you tonight a little bit of work that he had the opportunity to participate in today as we prepare for L Building, which is currently under construction. And Holly, it's so nice to have you here too, so thank you. So I wanted to first just talk about the middle school principal search update for Seven Bridges. Adam and I had the opportunity to meet with the consultant group and they had prepared a survey that will go out within the next week to our families and to our faculty to solicit their input on what they are thinking are some qualities that are important as we search for our new leadership in that building. And Andrew transitions to the high school principalship. On August 8th, they will be here to hold focus groups with faculty, parents, and students. And in between the survey administration and the focus groups, they'll be in meeting with key administrators to receive some feedback from them as well. And then we've already started the advertisement and recruitment process. So part of our process in our district is important to try to have administrators that have previous experience in the roles. So we are looking to see if we can attract some current middle school principals to come to Chappaqua. We're reaching out to interns who could serve in that role temporarily for us as we take time to find our next principal. And hopefully we'll have someone to appoint in the near future. So that's the first thing. The second thing is we've updated the calendar. So I had been alerting the community that at once I had a better understanding of where the regulations were going to land. I would be placing half-days in the calendar. I have done that. I just want to make a note that while we do have three half-days slated for the end of the school year, depending on how our winter month is, that could be adjusted. I also wanted to acknowledge, and I'll send this out tomorrow in a larger email, that I needed to make a slight adjustment to the October Superintendent's Conference Day. I had to move it a week in advance of where it originally was because our keynote speaker, Heidi Hayes Jacobs, had a conflict on the 26th. And as we have been discussing in terms of our strategic plan, one of our focus areas is curriculum alignment. And she is the leading educator in the field in that particular area. So we want to engage in her work with our faculty. So I'm hoping this is enough in advance for our community that if they had made arrangements for the 26th, that they can certainly make adjustments for the 19th. But if anyone has a conflict, I would just suggest, as we have had in the past conflicts with our snow days, they just reach out to their building principal and I'm sure we'll be able to accommodate them. I'd like John to update our community on our construction. There's a lot of work happening throughout the district. Really exciting.
So we're going to do it in two parts. Both, one give to Jeff. So I would do the finance part because, you know, we had to go out to borrow money. So I'll give the board and the community an update on that. And then when it comes to the construction part, our ranking member, the board member on the Facilities Committee will do an update, give us an update on the construction. So the community approved the bond of $42.5 million in June 2016. So we did the first tranche. We borrowed 16 million in November 2017. At that time, you know, the rate was 2.69 percent. And then we borrowed a second tranche, the remainder, $26.5 million. Our sale day was May 31st and our closing date was June 20th. And the rate came in at 2.9 percent. So when we presented the bond and we gave the estimate and our financial fiscal advisor came and made the presentation, at the time we used a 3.75 percent. So what we're saying right now is that, you know, we're going to pay $5.7 million less than we projected. It's not a savings because we haven't paid and we haven't put it in the budget. So it's not a savings, but over 20 years, we'll pay out $5.7 million less.
Based on the interest rate?
As compared to our projections. Because, you know, at the time, we had the data, you know, it was all presented here and in our documents. So we will pay, let's, you know, maybe around $280,000 less every year in the budget. We had the budget less. So that's the bottom line.
Thank you, John, for working hard to get that in before interest rates started creeping up.
Yeah, it did go up once.
Yes.
The Fed Fund rate actually went up. So Jeff, you want to talk about the construction piece?
Yeah, sure. It's a long list. And there's a couple, well, let me start with the item that's not part of the bond, which is the sign at Bell in front across from the train parking spot, lot. We have come to a joint agreement with the town to have a V-shaped sign, a very wide V-shaped sign, of which we paid for one, we paid for part of it and they paid for part of it. And we have a joint agreement in terms of what will be posted on that sign. And there's all sorts of limitations to what can be put on the sign. But that, construction is about to begin. That's going to begin on Monday. If you notice, there's a tree taken down at the corner across from the Shell Station and Pizza Station. And that's where it's going to go. In terms of the, in terms of the bond, I'll try and summarize it. The three elementary schools, Douglas Graff and Roenberg and West Orchard, all had construction beginning, I think it was last December. That's all in progress. That should be completed on time on a middle, August 15th is the completion date, so certainly before school starts. Robert Bell, also for the steam center and for the inside work, construction's been in progress. Completion date for the steam center is not until after the first semester, December 31st. And completion for the science classrooms and the bathrooms is before school starts. The listed date is 31st of August, so let's hope they're on time or there's no bathrooms. The field, the outside work on the field, we haven't even had bids in yet, they're due tomorrow, actually. And then a bid, a company will be chosen to do it. And as part of the bid process, we put an expected completion date of 10/15/2018. So that should be completed during the first semester and be usable for both the town and for the students.
Lorelei is doing the fur field, right?
Lorelei won the bid for both of those.
Are they bidding, do we know if they're bidding on?
I don't think we know. We don't know who bids until we open the bids.
Well, you know, we have the mandatory walkthrough and two firms came forward. One was Lorelei.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't remember who was the second one, but there were two.
Just wondering. Mark is on-site every day if you want to ask him, from Lorelei. What's not listed here and what's not in progress yet is, I know we talked about constructing, even if regardless of the security decisions we make going forward, we would like to consider changing the handicap access, disability access to Bell so that everybody can enter in the same entrance. But that's not in this list yet and that's a hopeful project.
Also, we have a proposal here on the board agenda for board to consider is to engage KGND to design.
Right. Seven Bridges work for the bond is also, it's been in progress. That's down what I call the basement, I don't know. I guess it's ground level on that side of the building. And that's, because of the way it was, it was being able to be, it started a while ago, even during school, we could work on it. And that's supposed to be completed by the end of the summer, also August 31st. Here at Horace Greeley High School, most, a lot of it has started already. Global Learning Center started, that's not slated to be finished, I guess right after the Thanksgiving break, November 30th. The Steam Center has started, that's not slated to be completed until a year and 52 days from now, something like that. The L Building Upper Floor Construction has started. And when I say construction started, means that people have started doing something. It doesn't mean that there's been a lot of work being done, but the companies are here, the bid's been awarded and they're in here. That's slated to be completed by the end of this year. And the lower floor construction will begin a little less than a year from now, June 24th, 2019, with construction, with completions slated to be at the end of that year, 2019. K-110 Construction's in progress, also slated to be completed a little bit later than the beginning of school year, but at the end of September this year. The Seafield, which is the most visible of our construction projects right now to the public, is appears to be ahead of schedule if you ask me, but it's on time, it's scheduled to be on time for 8:20, before, right on the day Matthews can report, right around there.
I just want to add one, let me just add one thing. The construction of the Seafield is ahead of schedule. However, it's outdoor construction. So if we have weather-related issues, that, then...
I didn't mean to give anybody's hopes up, but if all goes according to Hoyle, it'll be finished. And then the Public Library, which is obviously downtown by Bell, construction begins, because they're not necessarily on the school schedule, although they do a lot for the school in terms of testing access and whatnot by studying access, they're going to start on September 1st or right after Labor Day. And that's not scheduled to be completed until, my patron, Halloween, April Fool's Day, 2019. And so the construction, that's the part on the outside they're adding and the interior stuff. If you've been to the library lately, you'll see they've opened up the new parking lot after years of negotiating with the town and the neighbors. So, and that is it.
Can we get a list of that, like where is that?
Yes, and I think, you know, we'll have some communication to the public too.
Shane, you had brought up, excuse me, I can't see Shane, do you mind sitting, excuse me?
Sorry.
You had brought up a good question about the library. So I thought we could explore that a little bit.
Right, I was curious.
Because I thought you made a good point there when we were speaking, so.
Yes, we, just I know some community members had expressed concern with high school students where they will do their work during free periods when the library is shut down since it's not scheduled to reopen until after Thanksgiving.
This library, the Greeley library.
The Greeley library. So I didn't know what alternative arrangements are being made in terms of student space.
You see, we're setting up part of the library here.
Okay.
This is going to be part of the library. And then we'll probably have some bookshelves here. And then the librarian will be sitting there. So this is a part of the library. Obviously, this is not going to accommodate most of our students.
Right.
But also the cafeteria is going to be open. And, you know, right now, a lot of people like to go to the cafeteria. And then also the outdoor space. We have a lot of students that actually like to be working outside. So we do have a lot of, you know, we work with our administrators and we believe that we have enough spaces outside.
Okay. I just didn't know if maybe it can be revisited once the school year starts, if there really is an overflow that students, you know, need workspace. And, you know, there could be modifications, but obviously we'll have to deal with that one. I would just, to be honest, this is going to be a difficult start. Yeah, it is. I mean, we're going to have construction down in the PE area, L Building's under construction, the art rooms are under construction, the library's under construction. But, and at the end, the opportunities are going to be tremendous. So I think it'll be a little uncomfortable, we'll have some logistical work, we'll have to do real time as kids come back. But I'm confident that Andrew with his team will be able to support the kids in the way that they need to be. Right, okay. So today, I'm like walking through and the L Building works going on and I went to go in there and you can't get in there. I'm like, "Let me in, I want to see what's going on." And they're like, "No, go away." And I'm like, "Ugh, I can't get in here." And so then I walked down around and I ran into Adam with a whole team of people trying to conceive what L Building will look like. Because it's so progressive, it's so different from what other school communities have within the context of their high schools. Adam has been doing a lot of work with our faculty to really define that space. So I wanted him to just talk very briefly about some of the work that they engaged in today. And, you know, he's really hit the ground running here.
Yeah, let me start by saying thank you. And I appreciate the warm welcome from the Board of Education and the administration and the whole community. I've met a lot of great people and I'm really excited to be here. This is day six for me. So jumped in and hit the ground running. And today I got an opportunity to do something I've been thinking about for months, which is work with our teachers on teaching and learning and curriculum and how to improve things for students. So we actually use the iLab, which was another thing that I've been thinking a lot about in terms of doing professional development in a space like that and using the iLab as a space to do professional development because it's as close as we have, I think, to what L Building will look like. So what we had was, we had the L Building, the teachers that are going to go into the L Building, the team of teachers. So we had English 9 and 10 and Social Studies 9 and 10, and we had the World Language Department. We didn't have everyone because we have some teachers on vacation and whatnot, but we had about 30 teachers altogether. And what we did was, we did some team-building activity with the idea that they're going to be put in this shared space. But we also jumped into really refining kind of the, our best possible future in that space, what that would look like, to distill some of our core values, to start to outline some priorities, to do some additional research in districts and interdisciplinary work that districts are doing. So just to paint a picture of what the hope is for this, is that English and Social Studies 9 would be on one floor, English and Social Studies 10 would be on a different floor. And we are working to make a lot of interdisciplinary connections between those, for the, to make those more explicit for the students. So there's more crossover between the English and the Social Studies. So the teachers are working very hard to kind of use what will be that space to make these communities of learners that are going to support kids through their ninth grade English and Social Studies. So I think the curricular adjustments that we're going to make and the instructional adjustments that we're going to make, and also building a real community. So when kids, you know, students go in there, they'll spend a significant chunk of their ninth grade time and their 10th grade time, they'll feel kind of nested and supported by the team of teachers that are in there that are working as a team to get to know the students. So that's the goal. I was really optimistic with the work. It's a great team of teachers. I think we're going to really make magical things happen in there for kids. And I think it's going to be a model, not only for this region, but really for the country in terms of where education and high schools are going. So it was an exciting time. We've got two more days with the same team, so we're bringing them in tomorrow and Friday. We'll be working with them to advance this work. So it's exciting. And I guess I'll close by saying that it's neat to hear how these departments kind of all fit together, right? That John's working on the, kind of the construction aspects and the timelines and whatnot. And running parallel to that is the professional development and the curriculum work with our teachers to make sure that we can use those spaces to really amplify the learning. So I think we're going to be, I know we will be ready when that space opens to get the students in there and get the teachers in there.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks.
So I have a question for Adam. I'm curious about the interdisciplinary aspect of the work. And how do you, and maybe too early to tell, but how do you anticipate that coming about? Do you think that the teachers will, you know, intentionally plan those kinds of opportunities? Or do you think those will just come about through just the development of the use of the space, some sort of, you know, synergistic work? Because the space is designed to encourage that, you know, that sort of synergy, if you will, for lack of a better term. So, you know, there's a contrast between planning and those opportunities just sort of spontaneously happening. I know that that happened in the iLab, you know, when teachers work, classes work alongside one another and then they discover opportunities for that kind of work. I'm just curious about what you envision in that respect.
Yeah. So I think both of those things are going to happen. Today, some of the conversations that happened were our English teachers and our Social Studies teachers had a chance to sit down and take out their curriculum calendars, their curriculum maps, and really go through. And in some cases, it sounded like they hadn't done that previously, which isn't unusual, right? For teachers of various disciplines, to be able to sit down and really go through curriculum maps and talk about what literature do you read in ninth grade? What do you read in 10th grade? Is there some crossover? What skills do you focus on and when do you focus on them as we teach kids to, you know, read and write and listen and speak and look for those kind of interdisciplinary bridges? It was important to me that they didn't force those bridges, to find good bridges that were natural bridges in strong curriculum that's already there. So if we can, there will be times where it's not interdisciplinary, right? There's just not a natural connection. But there are other times, the hope is that there will be a real intentional kind of perhaps a project-based learning experience where the departments partner to create an interdisciplinary project, which will help advance the content and skills in both of the subject areas. So I think both of those things are going to happen. I think just putting them physically in the same space, they're going to be spending a lot of time together. And there's naturally a sharing of information when that happens and sharing of best practices, whether it's instructional practices or curriculum. But I also think there's going to be intention, I know there will be intentional things that are done to make those connections, those bridges across those disciplines, which is really good for our students because one of the concerns in high schools in general is that students compartmentalize their knowledge, right? They learn in a subject, they learn a subject in a wing from a teacher, and then they close that as one compartment and they go to the next class and they learn the next subject, which is not the way the world works. So I think this will help us de-compartmentalize some of that learning and knowledge.
Also, one of the backdrops of what we're thinking about, which is what makes Life School so successful here, is how can we emotionally support our students? By having them in an academic community that is more conducive to collaboration and have a more consistent relationship with maybe with two teachers working in conjunction with each other. So we see it as a way to support our SEL curriculum as well. Also, I mean, I know it's probably too far to look at this, but down the road, I assume the curriculum will be revisited, whether actual courses will be changing to combine it, like whether it's a humanities course or an English and Social Studies combined in the ninth grade or something like that, where you take them as a unit. I know that that does happen in other schools and other districts. And again, too soon to tell, but, you know, are we going to be open to that if we see like maybe we need a curriculum change that offers that possibility? I think that's a very real expectation that we're likely to move in that direction, which would create an entire shift in our scheduling process. And we've already begun those conversations. But a lot of that work will be driven by Adam's communication and his work with the faculty that's just starting. But I think we're open to revamping how we look at high school here in this district as the community should expect us to, as we revise our learning spaces. So in connection with our thinking and our progression, I'd like to introduce Jonathan Costa. Perfect segue. So I just want to acknowledge, and we don't have a large audience tonight, but the board and has probably seen versions of this presentation either as part of their work on the Strategic Planning Steering Committee or our work in our administrative retreat or at the board meetings multiple, multiple times. So the pace of this presentation will be different than it was at the beginning of the year because a lot of the information is presenting the story that's already been told, now that we've reached a process where we're able to start planning based on our outcomes. Right, is that would be appropriate, Jonathan?
It would be.
So maybe that could be a good segue into your beginning.
And there are 40 pages or so of written material supporting data behind it too. So if you're interested in that, you can read that as well. The real point of tonight is transition from identifying the most important things that have to be done to doing the hard work of doing them. And it's not surprising that the kind of work you were just talking about in terms of creating learning spaces that are conducive to interdisciplinary work, et cetera, fit right in with the key issues that were identified through the process. So you're moving at this in a number of different ways. And as an outsider, and I'll, there's a slide that will show this. One of the things that I came away with is how impressive, how many very good things are happening across the district in a lot of different areas. And this really, in the long run, will just be a chance for you to weave all of those together in a more purposeful and focused pathway to get to the place where you articulated you wanted to be. So I'll just walk you through it real quick. If you want to turn around, you can see, and where you have the slides in front of you as well. A year ago, when we talked about this in this room, we talked about the goal of the whole process was to increase the ability to Chappaqua schools to ensure that every child leaves with the skills and attributes you believe are most foundational to their success. And we set it up as a backwards planning design. The first part of the process was to define those most important attributes and then to focus on what you were doing already and to see where those gaps were. And then to begin a process of determining the best way to actually close, to close those gaps. We looked through the lens of the various systems that drive a school system, that leadership focus in the middle, the student goals, those skills and attributes that we just mentioned, how you measure and give kids feedback on their progress on those things, how you teach for them, how you keep the community apprised of what you're doing and engaged in the process, how the work of this board in setting policy, regulation, and direction helps to support it, and how you deploy resources to also support that work. Trying to align, another factor in the planning was trying to align your goals for student learning with your goals for adult practice and your goals for the organization and try to create those through lines of goals, measures, and practices through each of those three layers of the organization. In going into the data collection, and several of you were part of it, these were the things that we were after, that those high-impact goals for learning, the rigorous teaching and learning systems aligned with those goals for learning, assessment and accountability practices aligned with those goals for learning, and those related system alignment pieces. So the very first thing we did was a lot of data collection, bless you. This was the application of the thought exchange where we reached out to the community in the fall, if you remember. About 600 members of the Chappaqua community, both faculty, parents, citizens, and students, contributed to an open-ended, which, what are the most important skills and attributes that we should work toward in our community? We took the results of those surveys and then had a discussion in the planning team. The red numbers you see next to each of those were the vote totals. And as it turns out, the community priorities aligned with the planning team's prioritization. So there is very strong consensus in your community that those items are, in fact, the most critical, high-leverage skills. There are obviously many of them, and I think when I was here last time, we looked at the 18 or so that you have sprinkled through your existing documents. And these are all in there as well. But this is just a sense of what are the ones that we think are the most, the most critical.
So is that, Jonathan, is that normal? Does that happen often where the community and, would both sides match up? Or do you see it more often than none, or is it more?
Well, it's, this was an unusual situation only because of the extent to which we did reach out to the community. Usually, you know, you do a survey or you have a focus group and the number of people involved in the feedback is not as great as it was here. So given the base, the broad representation in the planning committee itself and the number of participants who had nothing to do with that committee also participating through thought exchange, this was a very strong result. And it was both frequency and value. So these skills showed up not, they were not only starred more, meaning people thought they were the most important and voted for them more often, they were also suggested more frequently. So it was sort of like a quality and quantity matrix that really came together. And, you know, if you look at the list, it's hard to, it's hard to argue with them, especially on the cognitive side. It was very interesting, to me, the much more interesting discussion was on the attribute side, but it is a strong focused list and there's, you know, there's five years of good work in trying to get better at coming to consensus on how you define those things, how you report progress on those things, how you create, you know, consistent, grade-to-grade, level-to-level, school-to-school experiences so you know kids are building on a common understanding of what quality rigorous work looks like in each of those areas. As I said, it is happening all across your district, but building that common language so the perceptions of what those things are are consistent across the district are really the hard professional work of driving this forward. The potential indicators you see up there were just brainstormed, they weren't as set in stone as the primary skills and attributes. And Christine and her administrators are just beginning the process of narrowing that, narrowing those lists, finalizing them, because it's just as important to come up with a priority, four to six items for each of those that are the primary evidence items for each of them, as it is to get a priority set to begin with. Because if you don't, this work just unfolds and unpacks and you don't, you can't get a handle on it. So we're just beginning the process of going to more focus on the others.
Right, so in our administrative retreat, we spent a lot of time talking about what these six skills and attributes would look like and translate in a K through 12 classroom environment. So then we provided a framework for all of us as we begin to discuss how we can work with our teachers on focusing on these particular skills and attributes over the course of next school year.
And how we can measure whether they.
Right, and how we can talk about it. So one of the things that we had discussed that would make sense for us is to go back to our faculties when they return in the fall and talk about, you know, we've worked through a process to identify these three skills and these three attributes as really important for us to focus on with our students. So as they leave, really, we feel that they'll be successful, right? So then what can we be doing in our classrooms on a regular basis to help cultivate, cultivate these skills and attributes? So that's what a lot of our work focused on in one of our afternoon sessions.
And I have the results of the skill side that I'll show you in a second that Christine did. In the retreat where we brought all of the data back together, I did a couple of summary reflection activities that sort of took the five data categories that everybody contributed to and prioritized their findings. And we asked folks to think about things that we believe the district was doing well and as well as the gaps that we needed to fill. And this list was the consensus from the group around things that everyone really felt the district was already demonstrating systemic strength. And I think everything on that list is something that this board should be proud of and that your staff should be proud of. There was real strong evidence of just really good things happening across the district. And it's a foundation of success that you will build on, and I don't have to tell you that, but it is, many of the things on that list are things that are in those, this is what we want already list that we started with. So that was a nice thing to see come out of the process. There are areas in which we know we need to get better. These aren't gaps, these are challenges for the work going forward. And it's important because these are some of the challenges that Christine, Adam, and your staff are going to have to work through. And you know, Thought Exchange was a good way to engage the community in finding out what they want. How do we build the communication across all levels with all stakeholders as this work goes forward? One of the benefits of having that small set of key attributes is it makes it easy to talk about them because you can go back to them over and over again, and that will play a role. The second one is a really interesting cultural issue that the district is going to have to work through because if you want more coherence on how we work with these skills and how we see evidence of them, there are some things that some teachers will perceive as reducing their autonomy in some way because we need to focus on these things. But we talked about how if you think about goals, measures, and practices, we need more consistency in goals and measures, but you celebrate the autonomy of the practices. That's where teacher professional judgment comes in. So keeping that balance, making sure everyone knows that we're not trying to dictate how things are done, we just want to be consistent about what we expect and how we talk about success. We are, you are doing lots of assessment practices that match what you will need to do, but there was a consensus in the group that a lot of these assessments occur at the classroom, department, building level, and is there any way to track them all the way through to make sure that you're not, you don't have any holes, things are consistent, and you're assessing the right things for the right reasons? You'll notice that curriculum alignment is going to be a key issue moving forward. And how do you line things up both horizontally and vertically? That's a complex challenge, welcome Adam. And similarly to the how do you assess the skills, you know, the attribute side, the social-emotional learning side also is a challenging thing to sort of get your hands around in terms of measurement and observation. I just finished my second day of the Ruler Seat Leaks training, which I know you're using in your district, and there are wonderful tools in there and it provides a great framework for having this discussion, but that too is a complex set of skills and hard to do consistently, and that will be a challenge as well. And how do you enhance professional learning to make sure everyone has the capacity to do these things? So this is, these are all challenges that are really outside the scope of the primary work, but these are things that we know we're going to need to think through and work through as we go to solve those other, those other challenges. Questions about that? This is right from that retreat. These were the four biggest gaps out of the, out of the four areas that we collected the data on. And you can see in the way that we're phrased in the retreat, it was the consistency in using assessments to drive learning on those critical skills, from an instructional lens, the definition assessment of instructional rigor, and the presence of higher-order thinking skills in the classroom, the lack of, or the need for vertical and horizontal alignment for the SEL, the attribute curriculum items, and the same for the cognitive skill alignment. So those are the four major buckets of work that were identified as the primary things that needed to be done to close the gap between where we said we wanted to be and the current practice. And I'm going to translate them then into, into strategy statements, which are there. So we took those four gaps and defined them now as strategies for moving forward. If we do these four things, those critical gaps will be closed. And that is essentially the heaviest, those are, that's the lift of the plan going forward. So I will stop there, give you a chance to think about that, and then we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to try to do that lift. Questions about what you see there?
So Jonathan, we had three members of our board on the planning committee and I think we're.
Good? All right.
I think we're good.
All right. So the first, the first thing we did in going forward is we defined what success would look like. So each of these four slides which you have in front of you are what, it's sort of like a change rubric. What we see in the data as currently happening is in that present state column. As we make progress in implementing strategies, we should see those evidence pieces change until we get to the accomplishing column. So if the plan is successful over the two to four years of work that it will probably take to do it, we should be able to come back and you should be able to talk to Christine and her staff and say, okay, in the spring of 18, we were column one here, column one there, column one there, and column one there. Where are we now? How has the strategic work that we've done helped move the district from left to right on these continuums of closing those gaps? There are no strategies in here, these are just descriptors. This is what you see in the environment related to those gaps. And what you see in the accomplishing is what those gaps look like in practice when they're closed.
So what will happen is this will drive all of our work moving forward, right? So what I'm grateful for is to have Jonathan, who is outside of our district, come in and help us facilitate a process that collaboratively allowed us to decide collectively as an organization what we needed to focus on moving forward. And I feel that this direction provides clarity for all of us, particularly our administration, on how to prioritize their work with our teachers.
Do you have any questions about those four things? Because they, they sort of came, you, many of you participated in the development of some of the raw materials for this, but we completed the writing of them and did a little editing. There's probably a little sharpening that could be done, but they're pretty close at this point. Questions about those?
Yep.
All right. So the work to actually start doing this stuff is beginning. This is the, these are the results of Christine's first session with, you want to pick it up here, Christine?
Right, so these are, as I had mentioned previously, this is our work from our retreat where we had discussed what are some things we would be looking for in the classroom if we had students practicing these particular skills? What would students look like who are excellent problem solvers, critical and creative thinkers, communicators? So these are some indicators that we were considering so that we're on the same page as we talk with our faculty about what we're looking for when we help support their instruction.
And I believe if you close your eyes and imagine what would happen in some of those new collaborative workspaces that you're building right now, you would hope that you would see students doing what's on that slide, I would think. I mean, that's the whole, the whole purpose of it.
You know, so maybe in like a, an opposite way of looking at it, you'll see that there's, you know, a faculty member, and I'm not suggesting this would happen, would have kids engaged in coloring a worksheet. How does that fit into one of our indicators? That's kind of the conversations that would be happening. Or if we had students in there designing their own project, how does that fit into our indicators? So it gives us a common language and a common way to discuss what our instructional priorities are for our community of learners.
And the administrators also began to think about how, how to begin thinking about driving towards the gap-closing strategies.
Right, so what we also talked about is if you, I had reminded, because many of our administrators were part of the planning committee, I'd reminded them of the areas that were identified that we needed to address. So we just started a brainstorming process and asked our collective groups, K5, 612, and then K4, 512, and then our professional developers and our directors to identify maybe one thing initially they were thinking about addressing within each of our priority areas. So this was just a brainstorming session that we were, we will revisit at our retreat in August, of areas that they were feeling like they could tick off immediately to help with the alignment process. But this is, this is really rough work.
Yeah.
But it's good to see, it's helpful.
And really, the work going forward is to just continue, it's sort of like pulling strings together, strands together, strands of work together, and weaving them so that they're in one common strand, aligned with those four key strategies. And it's a great foundation and you're, you're working on the right stuff and you're working on it the right way. And if you stay with it, you will see the results of it.
Well, as someone who wasn't part of the process, I know the three of you were, I think, I just want to commend you for such an organized way of putting so many disparate, amorphous pieces together, and all of this rings really true to me, to what I, what I know the strengths of the district are and the questions that I've always had that have appeared here as where there's work to be done. So this completely aligns with my sense of where we were, especially in the assessment piece. I've always felt that the assessments just take a long time to catch up to, you know, to our goals and our mission. So I, you know, I think that, the assessments can drive a lot of how the students feel and what they truly end up doing, whether they really end up taking risks or, you know, those types of activities, so I think it's crucial.
And that is a very common experience as, as our expectations for what kids need to be able to do to be successful in their lives beyond work in the world that we imagine they will inhabit, the alignment of the assessment infrastructure of public schools grows farther and farther disparate from those goals. And it is a skill set that, you know, we, none of our systems are set up for it. Adults have to be able to work with each other to do this well because it's a dialogue about what successful fill-in-the-blank looks like. If they are isolated from each other all day, all year, all month, they can't have that dialogue. So the way we are structured and organized isn't necessarily helpful to trying to overcome that increasing gap, but it starts with identifying it as a priority, as a challenge. And it, one of the big responsibilities of this group is to ask questions about what that new evidence would look like. How does progress in these areas show itself? How do we talk about it as a board? It's really easy to talk about the regions. It really is. What's the number? What's the percentage? Yeah.
And that's the problem really, because we're fighting a lot of outside forces. We've got the regions, we've got the, you know, the state testing going on. We've got the SATs and the whole college admission process. And so those are a lot of counterbalancing.
And some of that culture, some of that culture is changing. I mean, on the college side, for example, there are more emphasis on evidence of what you've actually done, not what you've scored. The one thing I would ask you to always keep in mind is that it is not a choice. You don't have to choose between being an effective problem solver and a good test taker. If it's done rigorously in an authentic way, good problem-solving, critical thinking, and communication helps build skills and attributes that don't take away from your ability to take a test. They are, you know, it is a false choice, and don't be put in a position as a board of saying, well, if you're doing this, these other things are going down. I've never had a district that pursued these strategies in New York or Connecticut or Massachusetts. Massachusetts who did it well and saw anything but performance across a range of indicators go up.
And we've always agreed about that. And we've always talked about that in this district, that we don't lose the content learning and if you do, if you focus on all these other skills, everything will fall into place. I think the challenge comes in building and creating new assessments to measure these additional skills we're trying to create. So we've got all the old assessments, you know, the state has them and the kids are going to go through that, but we don't have new assessments yet.
I would, you know, the nomenclature of a growth mindset is a good target.
And I said yet.
I know, I know. Because measurement, statistical reliability are hallmarks of an assessment system that doesn't quite get all of what you need. And, you know, in assessment, we often let perfect be the enemy of good. So I can't give you a 100% statistically reliable indicator of problem solving. I can give you a generally reliable one, and is that better than a statistically reliable measure of a skill that is meaningless or is not going to help you? So if you measure the wrong things perfectly well, what have you accomplished? If you give kids generally reliable feedback as a community on the things that you know matter most and you see them getting better and they can articulate how they're getting better and they can self-assess about what they need to do to be better, you are doing them the favor of preparing them for what self-directed learning looks like in the real world.
Right. And that needs to be reflected in their grades because if they feel that all of this work is not reflected in their grades, then we're doing them a disservice. Now, how you go about doing that is something you have to figure out by doing all of those things that you're, that you're suggesting. But I'm just, you know, I'm just mindful that they be recognized for those efforts in more than just saying, oh yeah, great job. And then their grades turn out to be something different.
Sure.
Mr. Costa, I'm going to pay you my highest compliment. You've done something that nobody has done in 11 years of my board service. You shut me up. It seems like you've done incredibly, with conjunction with Dr. Ackerman and the administration, an entirely thorough job. I'm very confident what you're doing is the right path, so I thank you.
Jeffrey, I don't, you've shut me up as well. There's no need to say anything else.
Well, let's just go have a beer together.
We will communicate this out to the, to our families. We'll put something together and make sure that they understand what we're all working on collectively.
So we have a lot of focus on where we've been, where we're going, and you've given us, administration, administration, a lot of work to do. So what's our next step?
To coalesce that work to be done in more detailed plans and integrate it into the, into the work of the district. And I think-
Three, four years from now, we look at this, do we reengage you or do we?
So we'll be working with Jonathan sporadically throughout the school year, but what we need to do is identify who's going to do the work and what are our targeted outcomes and then what are our timeframes. So that'll be work that we'll be focused on for the rest of this summer. So we, because we have to put parameters around ourselves to keep the, keep our progress in the right direction.
Right, I was gonna, I want to thank Jonathan because I know, and there's a lot of work to be done, right, in terms of coming up with a plan moving forward and a timeframe so we're constantly revisiting to stay on target, so to speak. But what I think was, was very helpful was getting us all speaking a common language and developing language for that foundation that we could always come back to, even if we don't have the assessments yet, we know what we're trying to assess. So we can at least keep going back to that to see if we're meeting that goal and what changes need to be made. And we have a common vocabulary now, I think, which is, which is extremely helpful. So thank you so much.
Sure. I think, thank you Christine for starting this process because I think this is something to look at. Thank you Jonathan for doing all this work. And remissly, thank the community because they also spent many hours here on the strategic planning, as well as all the people who experienced the service.
Forty percent of the work done by a planning team was volunteer work.
So it was really, so we had a lot of impact, a lot of contributors.
Thank you Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes my report. Be in touch Jonathan.
Do we have any questions or comments from the audience?
Come on Jessica.
Either of you, either of you.
Okay.
David, how about you?
Do I have a, have a motion to approve the minutes of 5:1, 5:2, and 5:3 minutes of June 13th, '22, '27?
So move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5.4, we want to take a look at policy 5016 and 9051. I think Vicki, you can introduce that?
Yes, this, this policy was written with an eye towards the new one-on-one devices being used. And what we've done here is taken the two policies and made the student and staff acceptable use policies into one policy. And it's been written so that it's, it's appropriate to both groups. So this is a first reading.
Right, I'm sorry.
We're up to the policy Christine, so-
Okay, I just wanted to thank Jonathan for a second.
So this is a first reading. This has been drafted by our attorney using both policies and putting them together using clearer language. We've tried to expedite this because we, you know, the one-on-one devices are going to come online pretty soon. So we thought we would do a first reading quickly, I mean, to expedite the process.
Right, so if you look at the way that we redesigned the policy, first of all, we felt the policy should apply to students the same way it should apply to faculty and that's how it is in most districts. It's only coded in two different ways because it has to be in two different places in our board policy manual. The way we wrote it is very simple and clear because remember, we have students from third grade now to sixth grade getting district devices. And at some point, probably fifth and sixth grade will be taking those devices home. So we wanted to make sure we covered all the information that we needed to cover, but it was very clear for our families and for our kids to process together so everyone knew what our expectations were as not only our students use our devices within the context of our schools, but also in their homes. So might I make a suggestion that just, since this is only the first reading, perhaps you can look over the policy and maybe submit comments in writing to me? And then Warren, Vicki, myself, Josh, Adam, and Margot can meet and go over all those comments and then come up with a revised policy for our second reading in our next meeting for discussion?
Is that good for that one?
Yeah.
I suggested that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I'm suggesting that for everybody.
Yeah.
Not just Jeff. All right, so is that okay with everyone?
Yes, that's fine.
Great, all right, perfect, thank you.
Recommended action personality?
I recommend 6.1 instructional as presented.
Do I have a motion to accept 6.1?
I move 6.1.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any non-instructional items. And I know you already did number seven, right?
We did 7.1 already.
So we're up to eight.
May I have a motion takes 8.1 and 8.2 CSC summaries to the Board of Education report on July 11, 2018?
I will move items 8.1 and 8.2 together.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No. Yeah, go on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8.3, be resolved in accordance with policy 940 that based upon the recommendation of superintendent schools, employees in the following positions who are required to travel regularly among buildings in the school district shall be entitled to a monthly car allowance of $200 for the 2018-2019 school year as set before below. Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and Leadership Development, Director of K-12 Literacy, Director of Special Education, and Director of Technology and Innovation.
I will move item 8.3.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 8.4, as in the agenda, be resolved in the event that Andrew Grusili, Principal of RSP High School, is not physically present at high school on one or more days or portions thereof during the 18-19 school year, that either Colleen O'Connor or Laurel Lynn Stewart, Assistant Principals, be appointed active principal for a purpose of all short-term student discipline matters pursuant to section 3214 of the New York State Education Law. And I will go through that Martin Fitzgerald, Principal of Robert Bell School, if he can't be there, that Tim Doyle, Assistant Principal, will be appointed. Acting Principal of Seven Bridges Middle School, if the person is not around or not available, that the Assistant Principal, Greg Stifel, will be appointed as acting principal for a purpose of short-term student discipline matters. Carol Bartlick, Principal of Douglas Grafflin, if she's not available, that the Assistant Principal, Debbie Osback, be appointed. Doreen O'Leary, Principal of Roaring Brook School, if she's not physically present, that Assistant Principal Erin James be appointed acting principal for that purpose. And in the event that James School, Principal of West Orchard Elementary School, is not available, physically available, that Assistant Principal Lisa Stover be appointed acting principal.
I'll move item 8.4.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for going through that long.
If further resolved, District Clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the Attorney General of the Office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8.5.
I move 8.5.
Okay. 8.5 is for the board.
That's why I moved it.
There we go. Any discussion on 8.5?
Well, we need a second, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on 8.5?
This is to indemnify the Board of Education for our role in the district.
I have no discussion on this.
No.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8.6, be resolved, the Board of Education hereby approve retainer agreement with Sharp Person May and Lambert, will be effective July 1st, 2018 through the 2018-2019 school year, and authorizes the Board President and Superintendent to execute this agreement. I will move this 8.6 item, do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second 8.6.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8.7, be resolved, the Board of Education approve extension of transportation contract with Chaplain Transportation, September 1st, 2018 through June 26th, 2019, and authorizes the Board President and Superintendent to execute this agreement. Motion for 8.7.
So move.
Second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would just like to say, I look forward to working with Seth at 4:30 in the morning.
Let's, we're praying for minimal snow days this year.
No snow days.
No snow days.
They're very dedicated.
They are.
We're lucky to have them.
Do I have, can I have a motion for 8.8? Be resolved, the Board of Education approve an agreement with the State University of New York, a purchased college with use of facilities for the estimated amount of $25,150 for 2018-2019 school year, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement.
I'll move 8.8.
Do I have a second on 8.8? I'll second 8.8. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for 8.9? Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the à la carte price list for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion for 8.10? Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the agreement with Westchester Community Opportunity Program, WestCOP, to renew the current contract for the 2018-2019 Head Start Program at Douglas Grafflin Elementary School with a 1.26% increase for the total, the total of $31,000, $51,320, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement.
I'll move 8.10.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for 8.11? Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts a check from Box Tops for Education in the amount of $695.10, Seven Bridges Middle School for sustainable energy projects throughout through the district.
I'll move that one, 8.11.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8.12. I won't read this whole-
Yeah, for the fitness center approvals, right.
This is the approval for the, getting SECR approved for the state of New York for the new fitness center at Greeley. The details are all in the agenda.
I will move 8.12.
May I have a second on 8.12?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8.13, be resolved, the Board of Education approves a budget transfer of $1,107,019.58 for the payment regarding wireless access control of RSP Greeley Strategy and Security Proposal, number 192610-1, and authorizes the Board President to execute this transfer.
I'll move 8.13.
I'll second 8.13. Any discussion?
No, these are the locks, the remote locks.
Yes, this is for, actually, this comes out of our short-term safety task force and we're changing all the locks at Greeley and it's going to be car reading. Basically, for this school, we're not use the keys anymore. And, you know, everything is through programming and the safety control is that the locks actually will have batteries because originally I was very concerned because whether the electricity is out, the web, website is down, but we, we will also, the backup is the battery. And if battery is dead, they actually will beep, so there's, there's a, there's notification to-
That was my question, how do we know if the battery's working? Okay.
Well, so it's, it uses electricity and then goes to battery backup?
Yes. And everyone will be controlled with the card and then everyone will carry it, authorized people will carry a card.
Well, everyone will have a card, but whether your card is authorized-
Authorized to-
That's right, it will be through programming.
It also has a devol feature in the back.
Inside, for an inside classroom.
A manual.
And we're trying to still, working on the numbers and the final number is going to be lower than this amount, but we don't have the final number shifts because we're still trying to review all the doors to see what kind of locks that-
And then like replace the batteries like every-
I think they talked about every one or two years.
So like when we change the clocks back or something like that.
They're like double A's, it's nominal.
No, 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 but they will beep.
It's like an alarm system in your house, I would think, where it starts to beep or send off a signal if the battery's low.
So we're not going to change it, just, you know, with the-
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
This is going to address a lot of issues, not just safety for our kids when they're in school, but we've had a pattern of thefts before over the summer, so this is going to help us tremendously.
Because it will show who's keyed in and keyed out of every location. It's all computerized, okay.
8.14, may I have a motion for 8.14? Be resolved, the Board of Education approves a contract for independent contractor services with Marissa Greenfield as continuing education assistant for school year 2018-2019 at $25 per hour, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement.
I'll move 8.14.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
8.15, be resolved, the Board of Education approves an agreement for health and welfare services with public schools of town for 27 students at the rate of $751.55 per student, effective September 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, and authorizes- and authorizes the board of, board president to execute this agreement.
I'll move eight point one five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We missed it.
This is last year?
This is last year.
This is last year.
This is pre, this is after.
And basically, these students are going to Hackley.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight point one six, be resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with student assistant services, project success program at Harske Greeley High School for educational prevention and intervention program listed in the contract for school year, twenty, July twenty fir-, July first, twenty eighteen through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, for seven-two thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. Motion for eight point one six.
I'll move eight point one six.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight point one seven, be resolved, the Board of Education approves agreement with KGND Architects dated July second, twenty eighteen, in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for architectural professional services for district-wide projects focused on one point of entry security at the elementary schools and middle school campuses, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. I will move eight point one seven, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is related to what I said before about the bell.
Right, about the handicap access?
Yes.
Plus for other schools.
Right.
The man trap.
Related.
Person trap, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
CCRA is here at the back.
Eight point one eight, I will not read, but it's the, create a one point of entry security projects for three elementary, and elementary schools and two middle schools. It's associated with eight point one seven with KGND. And we'll work with SEACRA to get this approved so we can have as, back recommended, person traps.
What bottom line is, this, these are all declaring that these projects are type two. That means there are no or a very minimal environmental impact.
Well, we still need to go through all the regulatory actions, SEACRA.
I think it's saying that no further review, no further reviews required.
Before we don't have a-
Once you pass that, we say that we, we're affirming that there is no impact.
I'll move eight point one eight.
May I have a second? I'll second eight point one eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight point one nine, be resolved, the Board of Education approves CCSD bid B two oh one eight dash one three, video display board and scoring system, recommended award to Score Vision LLC in the amount of four hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-five cents for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
I move eight, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll move eight point one nine.
I will second.
I, I do have a question, yeah. Is this, is a, is this the company, I know there was an issue that we almost, like, we were trying not to bid this out. Is this the one we were talking about with the scoreboard, where I think they have certain technology that no one else provides?
That's correct.
So, we perhaps shouldn't have had to bid it out, but we did. So, I, I was just wondering where it landed.
The reason is because we're, we're trying to see when we can declare this as a sole source provider.
Right, sole source, right, okay.
But at the end of the day, there are council buys that, that really didn't meet the requirements.
Okay.
So, we bid it out.
Okay.
And I think Christine, you want to do?
Well, the, first of all, there's two scoreboards here.
Okay.
Not just one. And it's going to be amazing.
Right. So, is this the company that, that, that we were proposing that really had the technology we wanted?
We went through a, we went through a public bidding process.
And they won that bid. Okay.
Because they are the only one who has this technology.
Got it, okay.
And like Christine said, there are, there are two scoreboards.
Okay.
One is for the gym, that is part of the gift from Twin Oaks.
Twin Oaks.
And the other one is going to go to, they are identical, but one is for indoor, one is for outdoor. So, for the outdoor, there, there's some, a little bit more accessory for outdoor fitting. And the, the outdoor one is going to go to the competition field.
Great.
And the current competition field will go to the sea field.
Oh, okay.
Almost like a Jumbotron.
Right.
With animation and all kinds of things that can go on.
People's faces up there?
Yes.
I've, I've run that scoreboard at the competition field. It needs an upgrade, so.
It's going to be upgraded.
I'm very excited.
You know, we're appreciative of Twin Oaks because now, instead of just doing our field, we're able to do our-
No, that's great.
But, but Jane, the competition field, that scoreboard is actually new.
What, no, I mean, I'm just saying that, like, you, I mean, I've done, it's not like it's, it's bad.
Okay, because we only had, we only had it for one year so far.
It's, it's simple, like I'm saying, it doesn't, if I can work it, maybe we can do something a little more, you know?
What Jane is saying is she needs, she needs athletes on the Jumbotron.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Just like Madison Square Garden or-
Instead of just the numbers, right, it's great. No, I'm excited, I think it's fantastic.
Are you saying that if you can do it, then there's something wrong?
Not quite, no, no, no.
It will be, it will be great. It'll match the caliber of field that we have out.
Well, we're all excited about that.
Right, yes.
Seems to me the goal of the scoreboard is to have our home teams have a higher score.
Score than-
I agree.
And if it doesn't happen, it can at least, we can make ourselves look-
We can program it that way?
Yes. Every time we get a goal, we, we double them.
We could have done, we could have done that with the old one, too, but we didn't.
If it goes past zero?
You know, we, we just had a meeting today, I'll go back to the construction part. We, we had a meeting on the sea field, construction is, is going so well.
Yeah, that's cool.
You will see the, the light poles going in next week. And we also, I, I think Jeff and Warren can update everyone, we're going to have bleacher, is actually where for the high, the largest one we have, we can see.
Six hundred sea bleachers.
Six hundred spectators.
At sea field.
Yes.
The only issue with that, and it's not an issue, I mean, it's, it's going to be really nice, and it's the same issue that Byron Hill has, the bleachers face due west.
Yes.
So, when the sun's-
Yeah.
There just wasn't a way to fix that.
It's really nice, but you'll be looking into the sun.
Yeah.
It, it, we just, it wasn't a way to fix that piece. Because originally, we were thinking about reverse it, put the bleacher on the west side. But, you know, because there's a hill, it just couldn't fit.
Okay.
All people wear the sunglasses.
Thank you, no, we're very excited.
Actually, I had a question on this, the scoreboard, it looks like there are annual licensing costs. Is that something that we're then obligated to every year for each of them through that same company?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, you know, they are the only company can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion for eight dot two oh, items that are no longer useful as, as on the, on our agenda?
I will move eight point two oh.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eight point two one, be resolved, the Board of Education approves a contract with the White Plains City School District for Educational Services for one student for the twenty-seven, twenty, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year for the sum of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars, twenty thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. And authorize the board president to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
I'm just, again, this is retroactive, like this is catching up for, to cover the remainder of the school year, okay.
Um, I'd just like to note, there's a typo in, in the agenda, so it's twenty-nine point four thousand, not, not million, so there's-
Right.
So, let's make sure we say it correctly.
I did, I said twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents.
Right, right, yes.
It's the European way. Use a comma.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for eight point two two, be resolved, the Board of Education approves a contract for independent contractor services with Teresa Markley as support for the district clerk for the school year of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and authorize the board president to execute this agreement.
I'll move eight point two two.
I second.
Any discussion? Thank you Teresa Markley for willing to come back and help out our district.
And thank you also to Lisa, it's a, it's a tremendous work. I, I don't think that people realize what a huge job it is for, for the district clerk, so.
Lisa wears two hats, right?
Right, so, also had a great year as, as our first year as, as our district clerk. So, you know, we're all very grateful and thankful.[1596.12]